Mary Bell Bear.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Tony DeMarco.
Here.
Debbie Tomusco.
She's absent excused.
Kathy Pucci.
She's also absent excused. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is the approval for the minutes of the January 25th, 2016 council meeting. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve, Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes. All right, good evening, welcome to our council meeting. We do have a rather lengthy agenda tonight, so we are going to move through this rather rapidly. We'll explain everything as we go. Good evening, thank you for being here. At the conclusion of our last council meeting, the Public Works and Public Safety and Environmental Committees convened for a brief meeting to elect a chairperson for each of those committees. The Public Works elected Mr. DeMarco as the chairperson, and Public Safety elected Ms. Deb Tomusco as their chairperson. Following tonight's normal council meeting, we'll have a council work session to continue discussing the 2016 budget, and that meeting will be held in the conference room. On council, on tonight's agenda, there are numerous ordinances there, and all of them have to do with finance, and since Mrs. Pucci is not here, I'll go over those ordinances whenever I give the finance report. The only thing not related to finance is a confirmation for an appointment for Economic Development Committee. All right, with that being said, we'll go ahead and proceed with our normal council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name, address, including your city, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Todd Hopkins, 642 Redstone Circle, Brunswick, Ohio. I'm here with Brooklyn City Schools, and first and foremost, I want to get up here and truly, on behalf of the district and the community, want to thank the fire department, the police department, and the safety services that were involved in the fire at our stadium complex around the New Year holiday. We truly appreciate the service that the firemen provided to us under the leadership of Chief Zemick, as well as the safety services, the police officers who stayed with the facility, and I believe the community response team that they have as well, that stayed overnight with the facility while the investigation was going on. So, thank you very much. I truly ask that you would commend your firemen and your officers, and just pass on our thanks from the district for them. Also, I'd like to make two announcements. One is, the school district, along with the partnership with the police department and the Educational Service Center, will be providing an information session called "The Dark Side of the Internet That May Be Affecting You and Your Children." This will be on Monday, March 14th, at 6:30 PM at the Educational Service Center in Independence. It's a relatively easy location to get to, right off of 77 and Rockside. It will go on and talk about different things on the internet, dangerous apps that your children may be exposed to, as well as hidden apps and the dark side of social media. Certainly in the light of issues that our community has experienced over this past year, we ask as many people as possible to get out and attend to this. We think it's really worthwhile. We thank the police department for partnering with us, as well as the Ohio Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. We truly think it's valuable, and ask that you could, if you could be there, that you would attend. Again, it's March 14th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM at the ESC, the Educational Service Center in Independence, Ohio. We also have our annual drama play coming up this year. The BHS Theater production of Oliver will happen on March 10th, 11th, and 12th. We would like to extend an invitation to our senior citizens in our community to join us for a complimentary continental breakfast and preview of the production Oliver on March 10th at 9:00 AM in the Board of Education. This is sponsored by the Board of Education, the PTA, and the Music Boosters. If the, if anyone is able to attend, if seniors are able to attend, please RSVP to 48, I'm sorry, to the phone number 485-8112. Again, that's 485-8112 by March 7th. We also invite everyone to attend the other showings of Oliver that we will have March 10th, 11th, and 12th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
My name is Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Remark regarding the Ridge Road, the timing of the traffic lights, I'm thinking they've been redone again, as I've been noticing headed northbound when you're trying to go into the Ridge Park Square. Nowhere near to the, you know, the amount of cars that can make it through the light now has been, to me, drastically reduced. Is there any way? Probably not, but I mean, before the Ridge Road project was started, the traffic seemed to flow beautifully there, getting off the freeway, going into the shopping center, and since the completion, I don't think it's ever been anywhere near that. And again, I, just recently, I think it's changed and slowed it down again. You go northbound, people are getting off 480, and they're, they're blocking the lanes different times of day, and not just rush hour. And when we do get a street redone and concrete, is there any legal part of how smooth it's gonna be? I mean, that new section, you're coming off 480 at the right area, going towards Bitoff, you hit, you know, there's nice vibrations all along, and I'll be walking the dog between Memphis and Outlook Avenue, and if you hear the cars coming southbound, and if they're in the correct lane, it sounds like they have bad tires on them. And if, you know, if I lived there and had my windows open to try to sleep in the summer, you'd have to have air conditioning. Thank you.
If, Mr. Verba and Chief, if you could, well, I guess, I don't know if you guys have reports, you guys want anything to say about that, Chief, regarding the traffic lights?
The Ridge Road timing, ODOT's in the middle of a study right now from 480 to Bitoff that are, it's going to sync with the, all the way down to Memphis. So, this timing has not changed, it's still the same program that was in there, that was installed immediately after the construction was completed. So, at that point, I do not have a timetable when ODOT will come back with a new timing program.
Hey, Mr. Verba, could you address the, I think we talked about this last year, the reasoning for that?
Yeah, and it was, it was brought to the county's attention, and it met their specs, so everything was, they approved it, so.
All right, very good. Anyone else have anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn? All right, very good. We will now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and tonight we'll start with Councilman Tansky with the rec board.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Recreation Center is now accepting applications for possible spring, summer, part-time employment for the following positions: lifeguards, water safety instructors, baseball instructors, maintenance, pool attendance, sport court attendance, date camp counselors, soccer, cashiers. Applications can be obtained online and in person at the rec center. Registration for the Learn to Swim program has already began for the spring season. We offer parent and tot classes, preschool classes, Level 1 and Levels 2 through 6. Classes will take place on Mondays and Wednesdays, beginning March 7th through May 4th. Cost is $50 for residents, $65 for non-residents, $57.50 for Parma Parma Heights Partnership. Swim team cost is $65 for residents, $90 for non-residents, $77.50 for Parma Parma Heights Partnership. Swim team will take place on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, beginning March 1st through April 28th. Youth soccer registration has already begun. Cost is $60 for residents, $65 for non-residents. Birth certificates must be presented at registration, in-house league for players U3 to U8. All checks must be made out to Brooklyn Recreation Department. Brooklyn Soccer Club U9 to U14, all checks must be made out to Brooklyn Soccer Club. For more information, call Dan Gentili at (216) 406-3287. The Brooklyn Rec Center will be holding a lifeguarding class in April. Participants must be 15 years of age. Cost is $165 for residents and $175 for non-residents. Please contact abutler@brooklynohio.gov for more information. Spring registration for Learn to Skate is currently going on. Costs are as follows. Residents $47, non-residents $62, Parma Heights $54. These prices include the USFS fee of $12. Classes for the eight-week program begin in March. The youth baseball registration begins on March 1st through March 31st. Birth certificates must be presented at registration. Costs are as follows. $55 for participants who reside in the city of Brooklyn, current resident ID card required. $65 for participants who do not reside in the city of Brooklyn but attend a school in Brooklyn. Proof of school required, i.e. report card or school ID. $75 for non-residents, $50 for three-year-old T-ball. For more information, go to youthbaseball@brooklynohio.gov. Season starts late May to early June. Hockey tournament information. Sectionals began May 1st and will go through February 27th, districts March 1st and 2nd. District championship, March 5th at 1:00 PM. Please call (216) 351-5334 for game time and prices. There will be limited evening parking during the tournament. The rec center is now taking reservations for Memorial Park Pavilion rentals. Rental season begins May 8th and goes through the end of, goes through the end of September. Please fill up fast, so make your reservation early. Please contact Tina at twestfall@brooklynohio.gov for more information. The next recreation board meeting will be held on Monday, March 21st, in the rec center meeting room at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, and also the CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, and that will be Council, our Commissioner, Coltsar.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for February 18th was canceled. The applicant that was on the docket for this meeting withdrew his appeal of the planning commission's denial of a billboard at 5111 Tiedemann Road. The next meeting is scheduled for March 17th. Community, Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council will have its annual meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, February 23rd, at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Conference Room, and is open to the public. This group's responsible for tax abatements, for remodeling projects that somebody does, adds value to the home. 100% tax abatement is available for the increase to the property value, and it's a five-year term for this, so. Applications, we received five this past year. It's something that can definitely be taken advantage of by the residents. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up is the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did meet tonight at 6:30 as we, or, excuse me, at 6:15 before the council meeting. There was a number of things we discussed on the agenda. The first one is Ordinance 2016-5, which is our annual appropriations ordinance. This is on for second reading, and as I said at the beginning of our council meeting, after this meeting is over, we will have a work session to discuss, continue discussing the budget. Next on the agenda was Ordinance 2016-6, which changes the fee range for participation in a sponsorship program for the rec center from $200 to $500 per program, and this is on second reading. Ordinance 2016-9 authorizes the mayor to enter into a service agreement with Bailey Communities, and they provide basically all the IT needs that we have here in the city, and this is a renewal from last year's agreement. The new dollar amount for this year is $51,641.10, and that's an increase of $2,458.50 from last year, and despite that, it's obviously very expensive to have the IT people here, it still is less than it would cost to hire someone full-time for IT needs. And this is on first reading. Next up is Ordinance 2016-10, and this provides for the positions of two magistrates within the city of Brooklyn. The mayor brought in a guest from North Olmsted, Dave Lambros, who explained to us exactly how this would, would work, and basically what the idea is, instead of having just one magistrate, we would have two part-time magistrates. And the salary range for those, according to this ordinance, if it were to pass, would be between $12,000 and $15,000 annually per magistrate, so between $24,000 and $30,000 for both of them together. If you look at currently where we are right now, with how the ordinance reads for the magistrate, the magistrate makes between $23,183 and $29,600 for his range, and they were at the top of the range when the magistrate position was made vacant. Also, Ordinances 2016-11, 12, and 13, these ordinances would remove the magistrate from having healthcare benefits, which they currently do, and that, that will be a savings to the city of $18,818.52. So, how it's currently structured, the magistrate, rough dollars, the magistrate roughly costs the city of Brooklyn about $50,000 with health benefits. By, if this ordinance were to pass 2016-10, it divides those responsibilities up from two different magistrates that would not be eligible for healthcare benefits, and their salary between $12,000 and $15,000 annually. Ordinance 2016-11, 12, and 13, these ordinances are removing the magistrate from the healthcare for the city, and since he's mentioned in all three of them, we have to pass them on three different ordinances. Ordinance 2016-14 authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the civil and environmental consultants to provide engineering services relating to the sanitary landfill for the estimated cost of $13,500, and we received the authorization requests from Mr. Verba, and this has to do with some plat drawings that have to be done for the landfill and filed with the county, and that has to be done by the end of the month, so we'll be passing this by emergency. Ordinance 2016-15 establishes the fee for the evening basketball program within the Recreation Department of the city of Brooklyn. Two changes from the current, currently, it costs not less than 20, not more than 40 for an eight-week program. That will change to not less than 35, not more than $75 for a six-to-12-week program. Ordinance 2016-16 is a new volleyball program that the city is wanting to start, and the range for that is not less than $35, not more than $75 for a six-to-12-week program. Ordinance 2016-17, providing for the fees for instruction in ice skating within the city of Brooklyn's Recreation Department, and the new fee range for the eight-week program will be $35 to $65 for residents, $50 to $80 for non-residents, and $42 to $72 with our partnership with Parma Heights. Ordinance 2016-18, providing for fees for the use of the soccer, baseball, and soccer fields. Currently, that range is from $15 to $25. That range will change from $25 to $75 per game. Ordinance 2016-19 is establishing registration fees for the T-ball and baseball programs within the rec department of the city of Brooklyn, and the ranges will be as follows. Will be $55 to $75 per session for the schools, for those who attend St. Thomas More and Heritage Christian School but do not reside in the city of Brooklyn, that will be from $65 to $95 per session. The free range for ages 5 to 15 who do not reside in the city of Brooklyn and do not attend the schools will be $65 to $85 per session. The fee range for those persons ages 3 and 4 will be at the rate of $50 to $70 per session, and that's it for that one. Right, Ordinance 2016-20, establishing fees for the Learn to Swim program at the city of Brooklyn Auditorium and Outdoor Swim Complex, and the new ranges will be, with a resident identification card, will be $150 to $250, or, excuse me, $225, and then not less than $180 or $250 for all other participants. There's also a new clause that will be entered into this, that lifeguarding review shall be conducted for a period of two to four hours. The fee range for review will be, not be less than $50 per session, not more than 75. Then finally, Ordinance 2016-21, authorizing and approving the compost pond site improvements at the sanitary landfill in an amount of $28,031, and this is in regards to our landfill. We had some issues with the composting of the landfill, some of the runoff was running into areas that it was not supposed to, and so we had two options from CEC, our consultants, and we decided to go with the one that cost $28,031, which will divert that runoff. And that's all that we talked about for the ordinances and finance meeting. All right, a couple other updates from finance. Chief Melkey gave us an update on the dispatcher transition, along with Chief Zemick, and the transition, according to them, is going very well with the city of Parma and Parma Heights, and a couple hiccups here and there, but they're addressing them as needed. They're meeting on a regular basis to make sure that the transition continues to go smoothly, and the residents are kept happy with it, with the program, and no one's complained to me about it. So, thank you both, you chiefs, for the hard work. I know it was a big step going in that direction. Also, we got an update on the dashboard cameras for our police vehicles. They are up and running, or about to be up and running, and they are up and running, and then the body cameras will be up and running hopefully by the end of March. We're still trying to get things implemented with the software on the computer, the IT people from Bailey's, but we hope to have it up and running by the end of March. And that is all for finance. For the Planning Commission, please be advised that the city of Brooklyn has scheduled a Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 3rd, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. They will hear three different requests, one from Menard Incorporated for site plan approval to construct a 172,700 square foot Menards Home Improvement Store located at 7700 Brook Park Road, permanent parcel number 43319-001. Planning Commission granted the request on November 6, 2014, but this request has expired, so they have to come back. Second item, request from Menard Incorporated to install illuminated wall-mounted signs and freestanding signs for new business identification of a Menards Home Improvement Store located at 7700 Brook Park Road, permanent parcel 43319-001. They already had this request granted, but again, it expired as well. And then, an old business that will be taken up again is a request from Scott Clifford, representing TDA Architects for a site plan approval located at 4500 Ridge Road, permanent parcel 43223005, formerly the Brookridge Elementary School, and 4525 Roadown Road, permanent parcel 43222-002, formerly Roadown School. The request was previously presented at a July 9, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. And that is all we have for reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll now move on to reports of council, and tonight we begin with Councilwoman Bell Bear.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Something I found interesting that we brought up in the past were the traffic cameras. This is where a picture is taken of a traffic violator such as speeding, and a notice of your car's picture and license plate is sent to your house with a fine and a cost statement. This was greatly restricted by law when the legislature said an actual police officer must witness the event and issue the citation. Well, a number of small towns dealt with this by assigning a stationary officer, which they could afford because of the great amount of money the fines brought in. Now, Senator Tom Patton has introduced four pieces of legislation regarding the use of traffic cameras in the state. These proposals, once again, are designed to curtail this process. Surveys show most people deeply dislike the traffic cameras. Patton's four bills each would limit the ability of smaller communities to issue camera tickets. They would, number one, bar a community from raising more than 30% of its annual revenue from the issuance of camera tickets, restrict the number of camera tickets a community can issue to a number that is twice the community's population, block any community with 200 or fewer residents from using the traffic cameras, four, bar any community that doesn't have a fire department or an emergency medical service organization from using traffic cameras. If these bills would have, if passed, these bills would have a devastating effect on a number of small communities throughout the state. Close to home, it would hugely affect Newburgh Heights and our neighbor Lyndale. So, we'll just have to see how far these bills will fare. Also, there's a wonderful service being offered over here at our senior center. ARP is, is there, I think, one day a week, and if, and any of the seniors need any help working on their income tax statements, they can always go there, and, and I guess it's not really into detail, but they can get some information or a little bit of help. So, any seniors that are out there, or regular residents who are out there that need a little bit of help, please go over to the senior center on Mondays, and they can get a little bit of help with their income tax. And also, I'd like to mention, this coming up Saturday night is the Taste of Brooklyn. It's a great activity to, a great affair to attend. It supports our scholarships for our students. The Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce awards three $1,500 scholarships, so if you get a chance, come on out and support. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Bear. Next up is Councilman Tansky.
The Summer Youth Employment Program has begun registration. Youth Opportunities Unlimited will help match thousands of teenagers and young adults from Cogga County ages 14 to 24 to meaningful summer work experiences. All through the city of Brooklyn, the minimum age requirement is 16 years old. 14 and 15-year-olds are encouraged to register. As surrounding communities have different minimum age requirements that can benefit those under the age of 16. You must register online. You will need access to a computer or smartphone that's connected to the internet and your own email address. To register, go to www.youthopportunities.org. Registration closes Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM. To participate, you will need your certificate, birth certificate, photo ID, social security card. You may need to meet family income requirements. 14 and 15-year-olds will need work permits, see your school policy. Males 18 years of age or older will need selective service verification. You are strongly encouraged to open a savings account at the bank of your choice for payroll direct deposit. Only one registration will be accepted for each youth. The number of summer jobs is limited, and many teenagers are registering, so registering for the program does not guarantee that you will be selected. We do not know how many job openings there will be, but we are, we are working with others in the community to have as many jobs, as many job openings as possible. Youth Opportunities Unlimited will email, call, or send you a letter if you have been selected to continue in the process and to apply for a position. As a public official, I am strong supporter of this program, and I urge all teenagers, young adults, 14 to 24 years of age, to register. This is a great way for teenagers and young adults in our community to have jobs this summer. If you have any questions, please visit our website at www.youthopportunities.org, check out the FAQ, or visit us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Printed flyers, information regarding this Summer Youth Opportunity Program will be passed along to the high school. Information is also available to City Hall and Recreation Center. Youth Opportunities received over 20 applications from Brooklyn residents but never followed through the interview process. If you apply for a position with Youth Opportunities, please follow through the process so we can get a, get a number of Brooklyn residents in the program. Mr. Melkey, Tiedemann Light on Bitoff. The other day, I was stuck in that light, and it backed it all the way up to a number of people on Bitoff blocking the driveways, and that's pretty far away back from Tiedemann. Is there anything we can do with that light to change it a little faster, especially during rush hour?
That light works in coordination with Ridge and, or, I'm sorry, Tiedemann and 480. That's the last light in that coordination pattern there, so that was all programmed by ODOT when they redid it. I'm sure it'll get reevaluated when they add that extra lane that's scheduled to go in, but the problem that we've noticed before is that first car, and we put a sign up, doesn't move up to the loop, and that's usually what happens, is that first car's sitting too far back, and that's what makes it take so long. I've had officers watch that, and it functions fine as long as you pull up. We actually put a sign up last year to encourage drivers to move up a little bit.
Yeah, numerous of residents called, so I have to let them know that pull up farther up too.
Yeah, there's a sign there, so.
Maybe that'll trigger it and move, because those cars got backed all the way up and blocking the driveways on Bitoff, so. Mary Bell Bear, you brought up the traffic cameras. I'm 100% behind Tom Patton, and I believe there was a couple court cases, and that's why, East Cleveland being one of them, the law director was all over the TV stating she's going to continue to ticket with these standalone cameras until these court cases were heard. Have you heard anything?
No, I, I haven't, no.
They're taking the state on in a couple court cases, and I believe Lyndale, along with Newburgh Heights, are all waiting to see what happens with those court cases, so I'm hoping this new legislation that he's going to put in place will strengthen these standalone cameras that are giving tickets out with nobody around them. Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Councilwoman Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I had the opportunity...
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I had the opportunity to attend the annual meeting of the Northeast Ohio City Council Association on February 11, 2016. The subject was planning for strong public safety initiatives. The guest speakers were Frank Bova, a Cleveland police officer, also was once a police officer in Warrensville Heights and a Cuyahoga County sheriff, Dwayne Deskins, a former federal prosecutor who is now an assistant prosecutor and chief juvenile Justice Center Division of Juvenile Crime Prevention, Edward Kraus, Director of Regional Collaboration to promote services that will save time, money, and personnel costs for Cuyahoga County communities, Sheriff Clifford Pinkney, recently appointed Cuyahoga County Sheriff, who will be addressing human trafficking. Through this organization, we have access to speakers on many current issues, and I'm glad I had the chance to attend this forum to learn how many programs are available to us. One of the most important issues in my sight would be drug and heroin addiction. Ohio has one of the highest heroin death rates, especially among young people. The Cuyahoga County Opia Task Force has many drug awareness and prevention programs, and I plan to find out which programs are appropriate for our city. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politsky. Next up is Councilman DeMarco.
I'd just like to make a quick comment regarding the IKEA project. As most of you know, it looks like at this point, the project is not moving forward, although we're still optimistic that it may happen. And I just want to make sure that the public, not only the residents in Brooklyn, but folks outside of the city, don't take something that was written out of context. I'm not going to read the whole quote, but it basically says here, "We have no other undeveloped land in the city of Brooklyn," and that is far from the truth. Although we do not control the land at American greetings, certainly in my opinion, it's probably one of the most undeveloped and available pieces of property probably in Cuyahoga County. So, for those folks who may have some interest in coming to Brooklyn, we certainly have land available if you're interested, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. DeMarco. Just a couple of things. You've all heard me talk enough tonight, but just a couple of things. I know that the temperatures are starting to warm up, and I think everyone's optimistic and hopeful that the snow is gone. I'm not holding my breath, all right, because I've lived here now for almost 15 years, and it doesn't seem to end until about April. But, I've had a couple of residents call. Actually, this last week was the, really, the first really major snowfall that we've had, and just people complaining that residents are blowing their snow from their driveway into other people's property. Now, Mr. Tansky brought this up last year, and we passed an ordinance to make sure that doesn't happen. I would just ask residents just to be conscious of, conscientious of what you're doing. You wouldn't want someone doing that to you. We live in close quarters in Brooklyn, and so it can be a safety hazard where if you're, you know, blowing your snow in front of someone's gate, or in front of someone's door, or in someone's, onto someone's driveway, and they, either ambulances can't get in or they can't get out. So, just be conscious of that, and just make sure that you try to keep your snow on your property as much as possible. And if you do end up blowing it onto someone else's property, like I often do on accident sometimes, go to their driveway and put it, blow it back into your yard or something like that. Just be courteous to your neighbors, is all I'm saying. And for the most part, 99% of the people are that way. Just a friendly reminder for those of you who may have gotten in a hurry and may have done that. Also, please remember to vote on March 15. I know that we've, if you're paying attention to the news at all, we're in the middle of a presidential election, and Ohio actually moved up, the Republican Party and Democratic Party both moved up their primaries this year to March 15, which is, it's been in June in the past, and so we've moved it up pretty significantly. And it's not just the president and vice president who's on the ballot. There's a US senator up for reelection, our US representative, state senator, state representative, along with a whole litany of other state and local officials and judges. And for a listing of all the candidates, you can go to the Ohio Secretary of State's website, which is sos.state.ohio.us. And remember, it is March 15 this year, and so please make sure if you're going to vote absentee that you get those absentee ballots in. And you can vote at the Board of Elections. I believe that started on the 17th of February, so you can go down anytime that they're open and cast your ballot down at the Board of Elections. Also, I want to thank Mr. Hopkins for coming tonight and talking about the Brooklyn High School drama. My wife and neighbor were able to go last year, and they do a fantastic job. It's very well done. It's a first-rate performance, and the kids do a great job, so I was strongly encourage residents to go out and support the school and support the drama program. Also, I very quickly went through those Recreation Department fees on those ordinances, and I don't expect everyone to memorize those things. And if you have any questions, you can call the Rec Center at 351-5334, and they can give you all that information. And also, I apologize that there's so many ordinances. It's just kind of the way that things are right now, but we're working on consolidating those to put them in one ordinance, so we don't have to read through six or seven or eight different ordinances every time I go through them. I also wanted to make one comment on ordinance 2016-10, and that's the ordinance regarding the positions of two magistrates. And this is the kind of thinking that we need in Brooklyn where we're finding ways to run departments more effectively and more efficiently. And this is a good example of that, and I want to thank Mr. Lambros for coming into the finance meeting, answering any questions that we had. The chiefs, the police chief is definitely on board with this, and it will not only save the city significant dollars, it will also provide for a more fluid system down in mayor's court, and also allow us to not have to hold people in jails for longer than we need to. We can move them through much quicker. So, I just wanted to commend the mayor and the administration on that ordinance. And with that being said, that's all I have. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening, everyone. I just first like to thank Karen Fredo, our acting senior director, for what a wonderful job she did at the Valentine's Lunch and Dance, and all the senior center volunteers. It was a great event. The Building Department and Police Department have finished their annual reports this past week. Some of the highlights from the Building Department included for 2015, modifying some of the business forms to make them user-friendly for our businesses, scanning documents instead of printing all records, helping with the transition of eight new businesses in Brooklyn and the relocation of three, continuing a systematic house-to-house approach, including all the houses west of Ridge Road from Outlook to Southfield. That led to 281 notifications, of which 239 of these violations were brought into compliance last year. The Building Department also completed 34 rental inspections, including in the apartments at the Westbrooks, Floridians, and Ridge Road. In 2015, construction was down from the previous two years. The total estimated amount of construction was $6,800,000, totaling about $154,000 in permit fees. In the Police Department, the city saw a drop in service calls by 10.6% from 2014, with an overall decrease in crimes for the year compared to the previous year. The police are continuing to make training a priority with over 800 hours dedicated to it last year. This is not only to meet the changes in policing, but also to comply with the state standards. Every officer last year had special training in domestic violence, first aid, CPR, cultural competence, and firearms. Additionally, the Police Department added new dashboard cameras and body cameras for each officer. This helps with evidence, accountability, and training. The Fire and Building Departments' annual reports are currently available on the city's website, and the police chief will send his report off to council tomorrow and have his report up on the website this week. I sent out an email to council this past week. The fire chief, the police chief, and I met with the county about the Ready Notify program. This program would replace the Code RED program that we're currently using. This notification is for emergencies and for snow bands and other notifications that the city would use. This would actually save the city about $25,650 for a three-year span because the service is offered free by the county. The only hitch and the only problem with this plan is that it's a self-populated database. So, we would have to notify all of the Code RED people that are participating in this about switching over to the Ready Notify program, and this is going to be available on the website. But first, the three chiefs, or the two chiefs and the service director are getting trained on this program, and after they're trained, we'll roll out the Ready Notify program, release a Code RED update for those people participating who want to continue to go on our website and sign up once more. We will have two days over at the senior center, March 10 and March 24, from 11:30 to 12:30 PM, to help the seniors with this transition. They could just fill out forms, and our staff will enter their information into our database. We also notify residents on our website and other means, so if you can watch out for this change. I'd like to give a little update on the cable stations. We're up and running on AT&amp;T U-verse, but we're still waiting for Time Warner and WOW. Right now, Time Warner's still going through the approval process for the PEG channel. Our Bailey's Communication reached out today and asked for an update and explained that there's been six months with really no movement, and Time Warner assured us that they would put this high on their priority list, so I'm hoping that they mean it. As far as WOW, they're currently testing the pooling video stream from the PEG channel video source. This takes about two weeks, and from there, we'll be able to see how we could stream the video on their service. If they're unable to do the video stream from the PEG channel, then they'll have to provide us different options to move forward. And that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we'll move on to directors' reports. We have just one tonight from our Economic Development Director, Andy Udris.
Thank you. I just wanted to update council members regarding the current situation that we have with IKEA. Even though IKEA chose not to renew their options with the city through the CIC Corporation and with the Plain Dealer Corporation, they have not withdrawn their application from the Army Corps of Engineers, and we are continuing to work with the US, with the Ohio Department of EPA and the Greater Cleveland Partnership to identify how we can convince the US Army and the US EPA to change their positions on this project at this time. So, though it was a setback, we have not given up, and we're pursuing all our options.
Is that all you have?
That's all.
Well, Mr. Udris, I've had some residents talk to me. I know you sent a letter out. Is there maybe something you can tell the residents that they can do to contact the Corps of Engineers, or what we can do to push this thing forward as residents?
Yes, I think if residents are motivated here, this is really an opportunity for them to contact their federal and congressional legislators to urge them to look into this matter and to identify whether the US Army Corps of Engineers and the US EPA are acting properly in accordance with the rules. We think at this time, they're not being very creative in this matter, and we really feel in order to protect 350 jobs and a major new investment to our community, that it would be very wise for the federal officials to look into this and see if we have misunderstood something, or there's some other options that we have available to us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Udris. And I would encourage residents to, if the IKEA store is something that you think would be very positive for the city of Brooklyn, I personally think it would be very good for our city to be located up there, please take some time to contact our legislative officials. They work for us, even though sometimes it doesn't appear that way. They do work for us, and I know that the mayor's office has been in contact with Senator Brown, Senator Portman, and Representative Capper's office dozens of times, trying to get them to move on this. But hearing from the residents of the city of Brooklyn would really, if just getting 10, 15, 20 phone calls, they will pay attention. I've had some history in the past with getting ahold of representatives and senators on legislation and things like that, and they will listen to you. And so just maybe a phone call or an email address to their offices would go a long, long way. This is an important project for the city, and I know that Mr. Udris and the administration has been working hard on this, but as a resident, if you want to help out, please, as he said, please contact your elected official. All right, that's all we have for the directors' reports. Next, we'll move on to legislation. And the first thing we have is a confirmation for the mayor's appointment to the Economic Development Committee. And I do have a letter here dated February 1. Dear Members of Council, I'm requesting city council confirmation on the appointment of Mr. Andy Selhertz to the City of Brooklyn Economic Development Committee. Mr. Selhertz will replace former committee member Ms. Deb Tomusco, who was appointed to fill the vacant city council seat. Mr. Selhertz is a former city council member and has been and currently is active in the community, school, and city government. I am confident that Mr. Selhertz will be a great addition to this committee. Sincerely, Catherine Gallagher, Mayor, and I will make that motion to approve the appointment.
May I be recognized quickly?
Yes.
I know there were some questions at the last meeting, and Mr. Butler had put together an email to the two council members that had objections. He went through the legalities of what's considered a business member in the community, as well as outlining Mr. Selhertz's resume and what makes him qualified. So, I just want to reassure everyone that was followed up on.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a second?
Second.
To confirm the appointment, Mary Bellbeer?
No.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
No.
Okay, next up, we'll move on to ordinance 2016-5, which is the annual appropriations ordinance, and this is on second reading. Next up is ordinance 2016-6, which is establishing fees for the sports sponsorship program at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. This is also on second reading. Ordinance 2016-9 is authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement with renewal with Bailey Communications to provide maintenance of network, software support, and other related services for the city of Brooklyn, in the amount totaling $51,641.10, and this is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-10, this is providing for the positions of two magistrates with the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. I've already just talked about what this ordinance does, and this is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-11 is amending Section 2 of Ordinance 2012-91, adopted January 28, 2013, entitled Health Insurance Coverage for the Position of Part-Time Law Director, Prosecutor, and Magistrate, and this will remove magistrate from that requirement. And this is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-12, amending Section 3 of Ordinance 2013-31, adopted on May 13, 2013, entitled to provide for the policy governing the maximum hours worked for part-time employees for the city of Brooklyn, and again, this removes the magistrate from those requirements. Ordinance 2, and that's on first reading. Ordinance 2016-13, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance 2015-62, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time administrative employees non-bargain agreement for the city of Brooklyn, Ohio, and it's on first reading, but I already read what those changes would be. Ordinance 2016-14, we'd like to pass by emergency measure tonight to get this work done. It needs to be completed by the end of the month. Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated to provide engineering services relating to the sanitary landfill for the estimated cost of $13,500. Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-15, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2008-65, establishing the fee for evening basketball program with the Recreation Department of the city of Brooklyn. This is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-16, establishing the fee for the evening volleyball program within the rec department of the city of Brooklyn. This is also on first reading. Ordinance 2016-17, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2009-7, providing for fees for instruction in ice skating within the city of Brooklyn Rec Department on first reading. Ordinance 2016-18, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2009-23, providing for fees for softball, baseball, soccer field usage within the city of Brooklyn Rec Department on first reading. Ordinance 2016-19, establishing registration fees for the T-ball and baseball programs within the rec department of the city of Brooklyn, and repealing ordinances 2010 and 2011-15. This is on first reading as well. Ordinance 2016-20, amending Section 2 of Ordinance 2003-19, establishing fees for Learn to Swim program at the city of Brooklyn Auditorium and Outdoor Swim Complex. This is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-21, we're looking to pass by emergency this evening to get this work done. It's authorizing and approving compost pond site improvements at the sanitary landfill in the amount of $28,031 as specified in the proposal of independent excavating. And as Mr. Enavich said in the finance meeting, the reason that we're passing this by emergency is because this will have to go, if we don't, it has to go through three readings, which will take six weeks at least in order to get this work approved, and this is work that needs to be done to get the landfill up to where it's supposed to be. And that's ordinance 2016-21, introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes. May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just like the residents to know that I think in the last, whatever, month or so, we've now authorized and spent, or will spend, almost $90,000 in fees related to maintaining our compost service to the residents. I just want to have that on the record. That's all.
Does anyone have anything else?
Can I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Verba.
Yeah, this is the first thing for the compost to remain in, with the EPA. So, this is just the first thing, not 70,000.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-15, amending, amending Section, Section 1 of Ordinance 2008-65, establishing the fee for evening basketball program with the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn. This is on first reading. Ordinance 2016-16, establishing the fee for the evening volleyball program within the Rec Department of the City of Brooklyn. This is also on first reading. Ordinance 2016-17, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2009-7, providing for fees for instruction in ice skating within the City of Brooklyn Rec Department, on first reading. Ordinance 2016-18, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2009-23, providing for fees for softball, baseball, soccer field usage within the City of Brooklyn Rec Department, on first reading. Ordinance 2016-19, establishing registration fees for the T-ball and baseball programs within the Rec Department of the City of Brooklyn, and repealing ordinances 2010